We do one here.
Gotcha.
So.
That's great.
Thanks.
Okay. Well, we got Casey here. Anything else that may be of concern with future projects? He kind of looks out. He's looking to the future, so.
Yeah, we looked at probably about a 20-year range. But a lot changes in two years, so it only changes every two years.
It's without drawing you out, and I know you gentlemen, thank you so much for coming. I know you want to hit the road to get back home, but these projects, as we look at these that are going to go into the, you know, funding cycle, they can change with leadership. A new judge executive or mayor comes in and all of a sudden it's like, well, what I may like, the next mayor may not. And so sometimes great ideas for projects will move their way up a list and then move their way down the list when you get into the leadership. An example of that would be the completion of the bypass. You know, there's always been that talk of completing from Paris Pike over to the industrial park. And then that may be important for a few years and then, you know, you get a new judge executive or mayor and then that starts working its way down the list. So the transportation cabinet does have projects that they kind of keep in their hip pocket that they say, this is probably going to happen whether you all want it or not. And one of those that they have been looking at for us, no commitments, Casey, but one of those is the 113 exit to try to maybe improve that out there because of the industrial park growth that we're seeing. So they're kind of working on a side plan there to see what they can do for us, so.
Yeah, so far we're only able to make minor improvements to that interchange, essentially tweaking the signals a little bit. There's a lot of truck traffic coming up the exit range. We do load station. Trucks have a little bit of difficulty getting up to speed and so a lot of green times wasted, just getting them out onto the road, making sure a lot of turn arounds. But what we have under consideration for this next highway plan would actually be more of a modification to that interchange, possibly some additional turn lanes or whatnot, or maybe a complete reconfiguration. That's something that we'll be looking at a little more closely in the design phase if we do five funding until the next highway plan is forward.
Okay. Any questions?
Sounds good.
Sounds good. That was pretty easy then, wasn't it?
Yeah. Well, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for the update. So did we want to talk about any existing pavement projects that's going on?
Well, I'm sure you all have seen we started working on Main Street.
Yes, we are so happy to see that.
It was a good timing with the gas company out there, caused a little bit of a mess, but they should start, they should pave that section sometime this week and we'll switch to the other side of town, work out that way. And then we'll just time it around whenever your all's project starts.
Right. So kind of recap that for council. We're very, very happy that we have resurfacing. We have asphalt coming from the bypass all the way out to around Neogen through Main Street. And that is happening now. They're starting to mill this week down along the bridge that's on Main Street going out. We're across the sinkstom going out toward Neogen on the Oingsville Road. So that's good and we'll see new asphalt there. And then the next phase will be because we have not completed our sidewalk project looking to the west, so possibly around Richman Avenue going back out, maybe you'll have some new asphalt in front of your house there. So that's good. And then the final piece will be once the sidewalks are completed downtown, we'll get new asphalt downtown. So good, good days ahead for us, but it's good to see that, that money allocated, so.
Get that done and then I wish we had a little bit more money to do some, some patching down from the 110 bridge down to the bypass, but we're able to at least fix the bridge end a little bit, so hopefully that helps.
Yeah, that.
The interstate all the way through here in County is in the letting for this month, so that should start come down this fall and complete until about next year.
The, can you talk about, what is the general timeframe the state looks at for repaving, major repaving projects? Like, you know, our project on Main Street, how long is that coming in time? Is that a 15-year, 20-year?
It's not based on time, Casey, you're probably, in case you were speaking earlier, it's all about that they go through and get a bunch of bridges on the pavement, they run them every three years and it's just based on roughness, you know, traffic that's on the roads, for whatever reason that section.
All that water and sewer work put ours over the top, didn't it? Last year.
Yeah, it moved right to the top of the list, so.
Yeah, okay.
But it was pretty high for a while, but we knew that, that water sewer work was coming, so we tried to time it so that the work, that work would be done before we started paving on that.
Right, right. Yeah, we appreciate you all working with us. Yeah, we've been wonderful. It's, we know, we knew it was coming and it's been frustrating for us waiting for it to get here, but it looks like if we can get these sidewalks project moving, then all this will come together down here.
Do you all have a completion date that you know of?
Uh, we have a pre-construction meeting on Monday. We should know more, yeah.
I tried to walk for a little bit.
Yeah.
They mentioned the skeleton may have changed in the project.
Yeah, actually we shortened it up a little, so maybe that's good news, yeah. We won't lose our, we won't lose our asphalt if we don't get it done by fall.
No, no, just maybe we have to do a little bit of asphalt there as well on my project.
Okay. You mentioned the 110 exit and I know the judge executive had mentioned just how important that is to our community. If, if, as you're looking, I know you have a lot of patchwork you have to do here and it's all priority, quite frankly, but that was so much appreciated to get at least that section done on 110. And if there's ever extra, we'd like to get as much as we can around that bridge done.
Hopefully, hopefully, I try not to do too, because if you do too much, then it goes right down the list and we don't get to, we don't get to resurface it. So it's trying to find that, that fine line in between doing enough to, to make sure it's still in good condition and doesn't fall apart, but not good enough that we don't get to resurface it for another 10 years.
Right, right. The only other big thing and that we just wanted to bring up, and Nathan Boston, our director of public works, has just prepared a sheet for you all to take with you. Main Street, you're all going to get that, so this is all going to take care of itself this year. These were all just notice, noticeable issues that we have, and I know you're all already aware of this, but a lot of it's on 713, West High Street, Samuel's, South Queen, Locust.
Yeah, no, we're, we've got, we've got a lot of work to do on 713 throughout the county.
Right.
Maintenance guys are aware of it and it's on our list to try to prepare as soon as we can.
Yeah.
If we can't get to it with maintenance this fall, definitely try to do some strip patching to, to deal with those issues.
Right. Okay. Can you just real quick give everyone, it was a learning for me, I didn't know and you all may not know, but District 7, you know, several counties that you all are covering and when you're in with Lexington, sometimes it can be challenging to, you know, those funds making their way to you. But actually Lexington has its own pot of money, right?
Uh, that district has, that, so we split up into two different branches in the district. Branch one has got Lexington, Georgetown, so they get their own block of money. And branch two includes Clark, Madison, Bourbon, Montgomery. And so really it's just where, where you all fall, where the project falls on the list and how much money we have.
Right.
There's been some projects the last few years that have taken up a good portion of the money before even, before we even get to some of the Montgomery County grounds, unfortunately. But I know the last year the bypass was fairly high, so I'm hoping it'll be high again this year, so that might be something that's coming sooner rather than later.
Yeah, okay. Well, we're all for it, so we'll keep, we'll keep pushing it to you and as much as you can get done, we certainly appreciate it. Appreciate, appreciate everything you all have done. And like I said, Main Street's a huge win for us, so we're looking forward to seeing that project completed this year, so. Anything else from anyone? All right, well, thank you all so much for coming over and hearing us out.
Thank you very much.
And Senator Upkins, we'll go ahead and turn it back over to you. I know you were going to brief us on some of the good things going on in Frankford.
I appreciate that very much. I thank you for your time and hearing me out tonight, allowing me to come here and speak with you. I wanted to kind of give you an update on where I'm at, what I'm doing. Couple of bills that we passed last session and I think may have been able to take for interest to this body. And then, you know, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. First thing I want to talk about are my committees. I've maneuvered around and got myself on the committees that probably better suit my field of expertise. I was on some county services committee before because that was Dr. Alroth's committee and I'm not a doctor and I don't want to do that. I'm sleeping on holiday and I said he could help that. I'm currently on banking insurance, energy and natural resources, transportation, which is very important to me, state and local government. We're on vice chair of that committee now. Legislative oversight investigation committee, I am also sign chair of that committee. And then I was placed on the, this is on the air mobility and aviation economic development task force because we have an airport here in Montgomery County, a rare port for me to get on that task force and hopefully we can bring some revenue dollars and economic development to Montgomery County and Mount Sterling via that airport as well. Also, I serve on the public pension oversight committee. Seem to like to put me on oversight committee for one reason or another. So we just finished up a short session. Short session, 30-day legislative session, still takes about three and a half months to get through, but we have 30 days where we're actually in legislative session, passing bills. It was not, I didn't like that as well as I did the long session. The long session I like better, it's not as chaotic, it's twice as long, 60 days. In a 30-day session, you do about the same amount of work as you do in half the time. We still heard and read more than 1,200 bills last session, even in a 30-day session. Difference was really passing 250, we passed maybe 120 bills last year, or last session. We stayed kind of in our lane there. We like to keep a short session and tweaking bills that were passed in the long session, not taking on any really big pieces of legislation. Think we did a pretty good job of staying in our lane there. We did take up a couple, but not, not a terrible lot. We focused a lot on education and education issues for public school system. A lot of time and effort was spent on that. Economic development projects, of course, it doesn't matter if it's a long session or it's a short session, we need to focus on economic development. And then we did spend some time on some bills that were pretty large bills, bringing in some of the state agencies, Division of Water particularly, one that probably drew the most ire from some of the groups that are out there that like to email legislators. And I'll tell you a little bit about that in a minute. The number one piece of legislation we took up, ironically, the capital bill one, that was the income tax reduction. In January 2026, your income taxes will go from 4% to 3.5%. That, people say that, that we're giving, that we're giving back $700 million to the citizens of the Commonwealth. Not the case, we're just leaving it in their pocket. And so with the 6%, the 3.5%, that's about $2.2 billion that we've not taken out of taxpayer pockets to the general fund for the Commonwealth. That comes with some issues and problems. So far it's been made up by growth and we've not missed a beat. As a matter of fact, we had a pretty good size rainy day fund last, last, last budget session. I really expected, the mayor and I talked about this quite a bit, I think we're going to have another surplus and a lot of this going to depend on federal funds and what you do with Medicaid and some of those other issues and how the, how the Department of Education and how those funds make flow from the federal government of the Commonwealth. If that gets restricted or cut off two months, that will naturally cut into our rainy day fund or our budget surplus. But if we have that budget surplus again, the mayor and I have worked, we've got a couple of meetings already about projects that we would want to try to advocate for and get funded in the next budget session. Look forward to working with them on that. Another bill that we passed was Council 606, it was a regional economic development bill and that allows multi-counties and multi-municipal counties to group together to, for industrial development projects. Just allow, it would allow, say Winchester, Mount Sterling and Chalkburg to group together and form a economic development committee or board, if you will, and they could all work together and it put a, that is, it allows you to create a taxing, or it allows that to create a taxing district where it would levy taxes that would fund the board, the development of it, the maintenance of it and the activities on this industrial development park, if you will. Couple of stipulations, the project has to be more than 300 acres, it has to project to create more than 500 jobs, but I think it's a really good piece of legislation. We've already seen a trial lead piece that Congress Lexington has done with Scott County, Fayette County and Madison County. That looks like that's going to be a very successful project. Kind of use that for, I guess, a baseline or a model for what this legislation does. I think it's going to be a very good piece of legislation for larger economic development projects where Montgomery County might be able to, Bass County, Chalkburg, Mount Sterling, Montgomery County might be able to afford a three or 500 acre industrial development park. That way this, it could get done. House Bill 606, I mean, I'm sorry, Senate Bill 202, deals with cannabis infused drinks. That was an interesting bill to me. Weed water, they call it. I didn't even know what weed water was until this session, I've never heard that term before. But apparently someone had and they recognized that some of these weed waters or cannabis infused drinks that were drinking, you could drink one of them and get high. And it was causing people to have CDOs, I sense, or CDF because they were testing positive. And so that, that was an issue, so they sent several of these different fans, the University of Kentucky had them tested and the federal guideline is it takes two people of five milligrams per liter, I think it is. And some of them were well over 100 or 20 pounds, what it's supposed to be. So we passed legislation that says you've got to dial that back and you've got to, you can sell it, you've got it on your shelf, but once that's gone, you've got to start producing five milligrams of cannabis in your drink, so. That was, it was an interesting piece of legislation, had a lot of cannabis farmers that emailed us and said, you're devoting cannabis or, you know, the hemp industry and I think we can get by with it. So we, or I think we can get by with it, so we passed them if they work. Another bill, Senate Bill 100, the vaping bill, that I think was an excellent piece of legislation. If, if you're going to sell vape products, you have to be licensed now, just like a tobacco salesman or an alcohol salesman, someone who sells tobacco or alcohol. And you cannot sell to someone under 21 years of age any vape or vaping product and I think that was a very good piece of legislation. I had a group of kids from, I think they were actually from Montgomery County and Clark County came to my office and were telling me about these vape products and how they can buy them even in the 10th grade, 1st graders are buying them. And I can remember a time when, we used to do that in the period, you could buy beer before you were 18 years old, because I'm old enough for me to buy it. I think that there were certain stores you could go to and buy even at 16 or 15, you could get through the drive-through window. And so they told me there are vapes for it just that way, that you can go, it doesn't matter how old you are, you can buy it. So we passed that piece of legislation and it, it kind of builds up to it. First time that that's offended, the clerk is fined $100. Second time, clerk is fined $100 and the store owner $500. The third time, clerk is fined $100 and the store owner $1,000. And the fourth time, you lose your license, can't sell tobacco, vape or anything else, which I think is, it builds it up and escalates the county pretty good, so it makes everybody aware, hey, we're serious about this. I think it's a good piece of legislation. Senate Bill 66, the bill that allows you to drive or ride side-by-sides, if you will, on highway, public highways for up to 20 miles. Now, the side-by-side has to be licensed, red lights and signal lights and brake lights and if you, if you bought one of those side-by-sides lately, you realize they're just like driving a car up and down the road. So as long as it qualifies for all that and you have insurance on you, you drive 20 miles. And I had some issues with this bill at first, I did a little studying on it, I didn't really like it, I was going crazy about it, but they touted it as terrorism, economic development bill. I wound up voting for it, I'll see how it does, which I always can wait and change it if it becomes a problem. But a lot, so far primarily rural communities are actually loving it.
Is it, do you have to have an age, do you have to be a certain age?
Yes, you do, you have to be, you have to be a licensed driver. That is, that's a very good question, you have to be a licensed driver. Senate Bill 89 is one I was talking about, it's Kentucky Water Week bill that, that brings in the Division of Water. There was a Supreme Board decision a couple of years ago that said the EPA had gotten out in front of its keys in dealing with waterways and their definition of inadmissible waters. And so they had really redefined the 1972 Clean Water Act and was, it was so restrictive and it was impeding a lot of the economic development projects. And I, I spoke on the Senate floor about this particular bill and that one time I dug a ditch, 200 yards long with an excavator, I dug it myself and I still had the dirt piled up, I had to dug the ditch, and I was just out of the ditch. And the reason I did it was I had a central pond downstream that caught salmon and I had stripped the topsoil off of the hill or something, so I dug the ditch, catch that water and divert it to the central pond to keep it flowing in the trees. And I was with one of these agency representatives and I'll never forget Jane Archer's name, we were walking across the property and identifying inadmissible waterways, if you will. And inadmissible water means if it breathes, if it has water here around, doesn't necessarily mean one, you can put a boat. So she said, well, what about that stream? And I said, Jane, that's a ditch. And she said, no, that's a stream. And I said, oh, Jane, that's a ditch. And she said, that's a stream. And so I'm thinking I got her, I'm going to dug the ditch, I know exactly what it is. I said, Jane, what makes that a stream to you? She said, because I said it's a stream. And sure enough, it was a stream because she said it was a stream. So my company had to pay, I think it was like $85,000 for me to fill that ditch back in when it was done because she said it was a ditch. So what this does is it, it rains that again and makes those, those streams or ditches are no longer considered streams. And it had gone so far as it weren't considered inadmissible waters, anything of a cap telling it was, that could have been determined to be inadmissible water. So that corrected that, so, you know, and that, we're back to now with the 1972 water act, what it intended to look like and those look like. Another bill that I've gotten a lot of questions about and it's a lot I want to talk about specifically is Senate Bill 181, which redefines how teachers or members of the school board or anyone affiliated with the education system, how they can communicate with students. Used to a teacher could, now I'm saying there's any harm with it, but a teacher could text message a student if they wanted to and say, hey, we got practice tomorrow, we got a homework tomorrow. Now they have to go through a school platform to do it or a school app where that can be monitored, that communication between the student and the teacher or the student and the counselor can now be monitored by someone. It was more of a child protective, protection of students is what it is for those undesirable people out there that will take advantage of our youth and we certainly know that there are out there. So that's what this bill was designed to do. I actually talked to Tom about it, he called me about it a couple of days ago, it was newspaper and I feel he has gotten some questions about it, so he'll probably run a story on it in the next little bit. But I think it's a good piece of legislation as well. It's not designed to, to keep teachers or staff members from talking to students, it's just designed to regulate how they can do so, in and after hours said. So it's a, it's a bill that we're going to watch, we're going to keep an eye on and make sure it doesn't go further than we intended it to go, but I think it's also a good piece of legislation, I support that. The last thing I'll leave you with is the upcoming session, we've got our interim now, we've started our committee meetings, considering legislation going into the next year's session, it's going to be, instead of long sessions, a budget session for a new road plan. The mayor, I know that was in some of your mayor members when I became senator, one of the things that I committed to doing was seeing Kingston Pike funded. And the mayor is absolutely right, there's a project moving up and down with changes of administration. The key is to get them to spend the first dollar on the project. If you can get them to spend money, they generally won't take it after the project. Having them see and spend money on Kingston Pike is very good, it's a, it's a step in the right direction, I really feel like that probably is a good point to get done. As soon as I get into my session next year, I will start lobbying for the made road project and see if I can get some total funds for that. Another thing I learned about, and I learned this lesson the hard way as well, a lot of our lessons in Frankford, and this is one of them, just because it's in the road plan, that adventure is going to happen. Just because it's in the budget, that adventure is going to happen. What I learned is they may have, they may have had a billion dollars worth of roads to be built and they may only put a quarter of a billion dollars in the budget, but each of them are going to have their monies in there. But you've got to look at that little code, if it has SPP beside it, that state authority, that means it's probably going to get funded. If it has any like MPP that's federal, that means it's almost certainly going to get funded and anything else means it's probably not going to get funded. So once I learned that, it was a little helpful, I can actually go ask for money at that point, but as I said, I learned that the hard way, but not one I've forgotten, so. And those guys, they were here to tell you, probably no senator talks District 7 more than I do, nobody talks to me more than the mayor and the judge do about they. We've got a lot of years there and everywhere, so we stay on them. I appreciate them coming out tonight, they, I know they had other things to do, but they did, they did take an interest in our complaints and so I think we should start the season. My, my issue with them was I still, we all drive in Lexington. We all go there all the time and you can't drive around Lexington for running a warrant barrels everywhere. You can't find one here, so we've got to change that. I'm hoping they're hearing this, so they need to go get us some funds, some money so we can do it, but it's up to them to kind of start building somebody's life. With that, Mayor, thank you for your time, thank you all for your time, much appreciate your time for coming here and speaking. Be happy to answer, entertain any questions and feel the mayor should sit down or give their own.
Any questions for Senator Upkins? We really do appreciate you and really they have, your calls have helped, they're filling potholes and they've been doing it over the last month and we really appreciate that. We really appreciate you going to bat for us there. I know this is a big funding or a big session for you and you'll know more here in the coming months when you all kind of get together and caucus and decide what's going to be priorities. Zoning is very important to us and I just want to reiterate that, that any discussions on zoning, we would like to make sure our input or our voices are heard on that. And I know you did that last session, you reached out and we had a.
You certainly did, I can't remember where you and I had the conversation, but you told it to me and I took the argument back to Frankford and we won that.
Yeah, thank you for that, that meant a lot. And then I know funding originates in the house there, so it's usually coming to you, but just want to reiterate, we've got a lot of water needs and the dam is a huge concern for us. Thankfully rehab is about to begin there, they're moving in equipment and, and good things are going to happen on rehabbing our dam, but we want to build a new dam. That's, that's our, our desire. I know the state sees things differently, but, and I know you know that, we would love to be able to.
And you know that, it's difficult to ask, it's not one that's going to keep us from asking, I mean, we don't ever not ask because it's difficult, but okay, we had, it's on towards that, advocating for that, which is helpful.
Yes, but thank you so much for going to bat for us. Yes, yes, go ahead.
A resident asked us to put up a sign out there, doctor's place in the warehouse because of the little geese, God bless them, are having a ball out there, walking across the highway. And the resident asked if we could get a geese crossing sign. Is that something that you can help us with or is that, what is the process? We do have to get into that, but I think it's also out of Old Salo, maybe they've got a geese problem out there too, so. She was afraid it was going, they were going to get killed.
How they do that is odd and, and I'll go back to, I'm a storytelling guy, so a little quick story. We had a fatality at Camargo not too long ago and I had District 7 come to Camargo and the mayor, they put up protocol lights and they were going, we were going to put up a protocol light. And I said, that's going to stop traffic, right? And I said, no, it's going to be a yellow light. I said, it's going to have a button where if a kid didn't push it to stop traffic when they're coming, no, it's going to be yellow, we don't want to stop traffic. And I said, you know, if you've got a kid standing here ready to cross the road, that's the only time to stop traffic, that's the only way to stopping. They will not change for that. They have their protocol and their standards and they will not be able to from it. That, I guess is good in a way, we have a lot of different ways.
Oh, we don't want to stop and we just wanted to notify people.
Yep, right. But if, if, if you or the mayor or someone will make that, just ask me that and email so I can report it to them, I'd be happy to do so and see what we can get done with it.
Thank you.
Shoot me an email and I'll turn it and also notify the district, just ask them how we make this happen.
It certainly helps coming from this body, the request coming from this body.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, sir, I appreciate you being here.
Thank you all very much.
Senator, thank you, and I know Kim, welcome, and we'll give you a shout out. I think you're putting together quite an event for next weekend for veterans. Do you want to share that information while you're here, just?
And I'll leave you a couple of fires to, but I'm having the second annual.
Yeah, please, come on, come on.
You know, public speaking, I'm from a place that is either cry out or throw up and I don't do that. So I'm on with Billis Abbott of Lady Veterans Connect, doing our second annual Central Kentucky Veterans Day of Hour. And this is June 28th, it's a Saturday at George George and Clark High School from 10:00 to 3:00. And what we have done is we have put together, it's a resourcing claims day. So we have put together vendors from all across the state, we had 36 last year. And we have three claims agents that will come and help veterans of any kind of issue or problem that happened. And we served 110 veterans our first year, so I'm very proud of that. The mayor actually had.
Yes, it was a good event.
And the judge, thank you all very much. So we're doing that again, we'll have opening ceremony at 10:30. So we'll do the pledge and the color guard and just a couple of speakers, just very short. But it's just a way to honor veterans and their families because they're always the last to ask for help. So we'll have, like I said, three source vendors, we're going to give, have gift giveaways and free lunch. We're going to have homemade hot dog sauce and brownies and cookies and drinks, so join us.